I know you can't eventually.
Eventually, like do I have to, did I have the special permission?
I don't know.
No.
Yeah, you can, even because I have people recording.
No.
That is somebody else.
Where?
Right in front of me.
Oh. You don't have no other password to enter that like on an iPad.
Because he can give it to you.
Because I don't know.
To get all the guys. What if they dance and stuff? Like it's every time you come.
I'm sorry to do this at the last minute, but I really do think it'd be faster if we tried to dig it out. The password, the password doesn't go. Can you fix that for me at some point? Can I give this to you to put it on a staff at some point?
It's a personal laptop. We don't worry about this until later next week, probably.
Okay. So, that's okay. We're okay.
We've had a pretty busy afternoon. Before, before we get started, I'd like to recognize the Reynolds High School Junior ROTC program is going to be presenting our colors tonight. And if you will remain standing for a few minutes after the Pledge of Allegiance, we have a special presentation to be made.
March time, march. Go on, march. Left, face. Please, the colors.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'm going to cop out, use the microphone tonight. My voice is on the way out. I'm Lieutenant Colonel Noel Bergeron, I'm the Senior Army Instructor at Reynolds High School. And since we were on tap for this evening's color guard presentation, we also wanted to celebrate a recent recognition of our unit designation. I'll read the order that came with this designation. Department of the Army Headquarters, Fourth Brigade, United States Army Cadet Command, Fort Rag, North Carolina. Permanent orders 245-1201 dated August 2012. Announcement of the following award is made to A.C. Reynolds High School. Designation of Honor Unit with Distinction for periods of service 2012, 2013 by order of the Secretary of the Army. Signed, Peter B. Edmonds, Colonel Field Artillery Commanding. And I'd just like to add, brag on these kids a little bit, this is the 18th consecutive year that Reynolds cadets have maintained the Honor Unit with Distinction status. Thank you very much.
Corner arms, carry colors, right face, orange, march. Go left, march.
If you'll remain standing and bow your heads for a moment of silence. Thank you. Just to tell you a little bit about what we've been doing today, we started at three o'clock this afternoon where we had a policy work session and we had a few minutes where we discussed some of the agenda items. And then at 5:30, we went into closed session and it ran a little bit late, that's why we're a little bit late getting started. So if you are here and would like to make public comment, there's a section over to your right where you can sign up for public comment. Please remember that we need a record of your participation and please remember that public comment is limited to three minutes. Next, we need to approve the agenda. There's a couple of changes that I would like to make to the agenda. First of all, Ms. Churchill has asked that I remove the monthly work sessions from the action agenda. We are going to move the personnel report from the consent agenda to the action agenda.
As amended.
We are going to remove the October 31st, 2012 work session minutes to be approved hopefully next month.
Mr. Chairman, I figured you could keep the 31st and then you already picked that three?
Oh, I'm sorry. I misunderstood you. The 30, you're saying that the October 30th, the work session is okay? Do you want to remove the other three?
I want to change.
Do you want to remove the other three?
No.
Okay. All right. So we're going to leave the October 31st, 2012 work session on the consent agenda and we're going to remove the other minutes.
Any board policies?
Continuing on in the series 2000 Board Operation Policies, we are going to be taking these and approving them all together with the exception of 2300 and 2310. I need to move those to the action. Okay, so we're going to move Board Policy 2300 and 2310 to the action agenda. Is there anything else that I need to try to remember to change? Hopefully I was able to get everything. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
I still don't.
Is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Dr. Baldwin, any comments?
I've got a few comments for the time. I'm sure you and the audience, Jordan Dean, agreed that the week prior to our break, holiday break, was a very difficult week for all of us, and that's educators and especially parents alike. And that was in the aftermath of the tragedy that took place in Connecticut at Sand Hook Elementary School. And you've heard me on numerous occasions say, the most significant priority we have in this school system is on safety, especially regarding areas of crisis preparedness, prevention, response, and recovery. And specifically in response to this incident, I've asked Dr. Adele, who coordinates our Safe Schools Program, ask him to survey from a safe school standpoint, the entrances and the exits on all of our 26 elementary and intermediate school campuses. And at this time, I'm going to ask Dr. Adele to provide you, the board, and the public with a brief summary of information. And he's also bringing to this board some specific recommendations. So at this time, Dr. Adele.
Mr. Reinhardt, Dr. Baldwin, board, I have bad news this afternoon, or earlier today, just got word this afternoon, that we had another school shooting that occurred in the state of California. A young man apparently carried a shotgun into a high school. Apparently it was concealed, he broke it down, I think it was in his clothing, and he targeted a young man that was in his class and shot him in the blank. The young man is not dead, but so much talk has been about assault weapons and all, now the concern is just guns in general. And as Dr. Baldwin has said, safety is the number one concern that we have. I've had a lot of conversations with a lot of stakeholders, our administrative staff, I've visited a number of our elementary schools, looking at student movement, looking at doors, and how, looking at traffic patterns, and how we can better serve our communities. We currently have an A1 system in four of our elementary schools. An A1 system primarily is a security entry system at the front door of the school that allows for video feed and you get to buzz the individual in. And we only have it in four schools. Now, two of those schools need upgrades. In the other schools, we do not have that. So we have 22 schools out there that are without any type of entry security. And so the concern now is, we focused and changed our concern to looking at the entry, the front entry of our elementary schools. So I consulted with Greg Fox, Director of our Maintenance Department, Dr. Monte Foods, Director of our Technology Department, and we began researching some of the programs and different devices that are out there that we may be able to purchase for our entries. And there are a lot. There are a lot. The average cost right now that we can determine for a video feed entry system is an average $4,000 per unit. And that, that is, we're going to need probably 24 units considering the upgrade in two of the elementary schools that we have. The good news is, is that we believe that we have located a system that will allow for the cameras to have an IP address, which will allow multiple computers inside the school building to be able to monitor who is entering into that building. However, there will only be one central location where that person can be buzzed in into the school. And you have to keep in mind that some of our buildings are old, and so the offices are not necessarily right at the front door. So some of the configurations are a bit different. Our focus has been on elementary schools because we feel right now with the middle and high schools having deputies stationed at their school, that we should really focus right now on the elementary schools. So with all that being said, I would like to propose to you all to set aside $100,000, allocate $100,000 for the purchase and installation of 24 video feed security entry systems for our elementary schools.
Dr. Adele, we may have some questions. We didn't get to decide on the, on the action agenda, but I, we appreciate your information and we ask you some more questions.
I asked Dr. Adele to bring this to you, and as the Chairman Reinhardt stated, this is going to show back up on the action agenda later on for your discussion and potential vote. It's timely that we asked this and that we are in the process of, and we're in a capital outlay budget process, so I think that's timely. And I'm going to support this recommendation to the board. However, however, I'm going to recommend that with the understanding that we all are aware that technology supports, but should never take the place of the type of training for human personnel and staff inside our school buildings that has already taken place in this school system. I think dependent upon that technology would be, as the 100% guarantee, would be a huge mistake. And I also would remind you that even though I think this is the right step, especially for elementary and intermediate schools, I also have to realize that in Newtown, Connecticut, that a similar device was in place at that entrance. However, having been out in those schools and understanding that the emotion and the concern that remains and will remain for a long, long time, I think it's the right recommendation to come to you. I also want to make you and our audience aware that that particular week, there was a meeting of emergency response officials locally, law enforcement, emergency management. We also met with county and city government leaders. And I think Sheriff Duncan, there will be an editorial in the Asheville Citizen on Sunday. We have put together a team of individuals, Dr. Adele will be representing our school system, and they will be, number one, reviewing our current practices and protocols. We feel they are extremely strong because they're, they're a national model, but they will be reviewing those. And then they will also be exploring any additional options. I think one of those, the intent is to actually visit another system in Cumberland County in this state that does have SROs at the elementary school level. So they're going to be exploring these type of additional options and they'll be bringing back a report. So I want you to understand that even though we believe that we have an extremely safe school system, that there's always room for improvement. So we are, we are pursuing those improvements. Secondly, I want to talk with you about our Policies 652 and 653. Next week, January 16th, is referenced as a National Recognition for Religious Freedom Day. You've heard me talk about this multiple, multiple occasions to the board. Specifically, that day represented the passage in 1786 of a Virginia statute, was authored by Thomas Jefferson, and celebrates the rights to observe the faith of our choice as American citizens. And on that day, we will be encouraging all 40 of our schools to show the three-minute video, which I think everyone has seen, and that, by the way, if you haven't, that's available on our website, the three Rs of religion in schools. And we will be providing specific social studies curriculum, and that is standard course of study. That is curriculum that is required in our schools. We will be highlighting that particular, those particular lesson plans, and they will be used in the social studies classroom on that day. At the elementary level, more grade appropriate lessons are going to fall in with our positive behavior support. And we will make those available. In fact, Mrs. Blunt on our website, you can currently go to that, and she's provided a number of examples of what that curriculum will look like. And again, you're welcome to view that video, which I think was extremely, extremely well done. I want also to make sure to clarify that that is separate from what was also discussed and put in as a regulation, which is our community, after-school community support program. That is separate from this January 16th. In regards to that, I appreciate the board providing a consensus that we revisited a recommendation that I made regarding that after-school program, that we look at a pilot program in one of the six districts for this initial year to fine tune what that will look like, and then to bring back the results of that particular program to the board for further review since that particular regulation is, is active and open. I appreciate your agreement to allow us to pilot for one district. I also want to, I think there are a number of members of our faith-based leadership team, you've heard me say in the past, I think that's one of the best structures we have in terms of bringing divergent ideas to the table and trying to support our students and staff in the school. And they gave us a strong consensus at a meeting this week prior to the board meeting that they fully support the January 16th recognition. Again, we're recognizing here in America, the importance of respect for a diversity of faiths and non-faiths. Also, the consensus was that we carefully look at the ingredients of that after-school program, and I think by, again, by identifying a pilot this year that certainly addresses that team's concern. So I appreciate them being in attendance tonight. We were asked to explore and report back to this board information regarding the videotaping of our board sessions, and that is for public viewing. And that will, report will be coming later in the agenda to you, but I do want to recognize that our recommendation that we're going to make to you, we feel good about in that we think it will allow us to connect with a much bigger picture, which is tied into our STEM high school renovation. And with a timeline change like we're going to recommend, I think it would be very advantageous for multiple uses in this particular facility. At this time, I want to ask Mr. Fox and Mr. Fairley to update you, the board, regarding concerns that we've had voiced over the inspections and permits that we've obtained through the county. That's by outside contractors as well as our own maintenance department. They're going to be informing you of some process adjustments that have taken place to make that process more efficient. But I do want this board to carefully note that these have all been made in coordination with the County Department of Inspections and Fire Marshal Terry Gentry. And if you recall, both Matt Stone, the Director of County Inspections, and Fire Marshal Gentry appeared before you about three months ago to talk to you about the inspections process. So with that, Mr. Fox, let's, let's start with you. I know this maintenance department deals with, I think, over 20,000 work orders on an annual basis, and Greg, thankfully, not all 20,000 require permits.
That's right. Okay. Thank you. As Dr. Baldwin said, we've been working with the Building Inspections Office for quite some time now. We went back several years and looked at a lot of the different projects that we've done, from A to Z, of every purchase order that's been written, contracted services over the last three years. We've added some things to our permitting process to help streamline the process and our work with the building inspectors. As I've mentioned before, we have blanket permits for every school. That means that covers our in-house maintenance work for minor stuff, changing switches, more of the minor type work, type environment. For all other work that's new or adding additional outlets or doing things like that, that's an additional permit. We pull those separately. What we've done currently is we're compiling all of our monthly work orders and we're actually sending them to the Building Inspections Office. They review those and they help us determine what's going to follow into the blanket permit and what's going to need a new permit. We pull those separate permits as, as they help us identify those. For contracted work, we've added more additional documentation that's required on our project forms and our purchase orders. We actually require the license number, we require the permit number, the date that the project starts, the date that the project's completed, and we also require a copy of the building permit, the approved final building permit, to be attached to that invoice when it comes across our office. No payment will be processed until that permit is attached to that invoice. We've set up different semi-annual meetings with the Building Inspections Department so we can stay abreast of all the code changes and the authority having jurisdiction changes. So those things are in place and we went back and permitted, we did find some errors, we went back and permitted those. We've done great. Everything's in accordance with the Building Inspections Office, and we're moving in the right direction.
Thanks, Mr. Fox. Fairley?
Facilities projects are typically larger projects. They're typically sealed by an architect or an engineer. They're, they're larger, and we do a lot fewer than the maintenance department. And we as well have instituted a couple of practices that we think will ensure that we identify that, you know, permits are gotten, but beyond that, that the contractor has, has fulfilled the full commitment to call the building inspection, get the proper inspection. So we're going to include in all our RFPs, our, what we've had before as a project closeout checklist, that we're going to put that right in front in the RFP so that the contractor sees that he needs to provide us a copy of the permit at the beginning before his first payment, and he will need a certificate of final completion before his final payment is made. In addition, we're going to, we typically hold pre-bid meetings because our projects are bigger and we want the contractors to make sure that they understand what, what's involved in the project. And at that meeting, we've got another opportunity to reiterate the permit requirement and that, and our procedure for making sure that they have it. And we've got that on our, our pre-bid checklist. Then during construction, we have a pre-construction meeting. We have another opportunity to do it there. So we're going to keep hammering home this requirement, make sure the contractor is on board, knows that he needs to get down there. We're going to invite the building department to the, to construction meetings or the pre-construction conference and let them attend for the more complex projects. Typically do that for the very large projects like a new school or an addition. When we get close to the end of it, but they're willing to come early on and, and we're going to take advantage of that. We're also going to hold preliminary project review meetings with the building department. We do that quite a bit now to, because our, our projects are maybe complex and there's some gray areas regarding code that we need to clarify, so we'll sit down with them and meet with them so we have another opportunity to clarify what permits are need, whether we need a plumbing, mechanical, electrical, fire, and building, any or all of those. So we've got several opportunities to make sure that happens and, and we're going to take full advantage of it.
Mr. Fairley, Mr. Fox, thank you. Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Chairman, I just had a quick question. I appreciate you going the extra mile with that process, but my only question would be if, let's say that somebody happened, some contractor slips through the cracks and doesn't get their permit pulled, and they know that, and it's found out by Buncombe County Schools, is there anything in place at this time to penalize them other than, you know, I know now that they have to go back and pay a fine with the permit, but is there anything like, you know, you will not be doing business with Buncombe County Schools for one year, two years, something, anything like that? That's another incentive to make sure that they stay on top and do what's right?
From the facilities perspective, we have suspended contractors in the past that we don't invite you to bid these projects because of lack of performance. So I think we can use that same system. This is considered lack of performance, you're not doing it right. Don't bid our jobs for six months is what we typically have done. You get one more chance, if you do it again, then you know you're off our bid list.
Great, okay. Thank you.
I do have a question too, related to what Ms. Churchill just asked. Since we have a list of contractors now, and some of these have had multiple offenses as far as not getting the permits and inspections, and they are going to be reported to their appropriate licensing boards for disciplinary measures. You just mentioned suspending. So I'm thinking with this list we have, can we say, well, if a contractor has, I don't know, maybe even one time they didn't get their permit, maybe we say three times, if three times, you know, they didn't get a permit and inspection, then we're going to automatically suspend them. Is this something the board would have to make the policy, or is this something that you guys can, can decide where to draw the line with these people who have multiple? you guys can decide where to draw the line with these people who have multiple infractions already?
I think the infractions in the past were not intentional. They are consistent with how business has been done across the state and certainly in this area as far as I can tell. It's, folks have to understand that the building code is not as maybe black and white as you'd think it might be. I'm on a regular basis asking for clarifications and such. So it would be my opinion, unless the board has a different take on this, that we're starting from now, everyone knows what the rules are, and we've moved forward from here. But that's up to the board if you wanted to direct us differently. I'm sure Greg would comply with that as well.
Absolutely.
Well, and this is something we can talk about at one of our work sessions if we want to come up with a board policy. But I think you're right. I think it's important to make sure that going forward, everyone realizes, you know, this is not acceptable and if it happens, then we're not going to use you. So we can discuss this with the board at one of our work sessions if we want to come up with some sort of formal policy to move forward with that.
And that is one of the things that we've got to tell our contractors. That's the first word is that you won't be working for us till you come back and get these permits at your best. Would you make that statement?
Very good. Thanks.
Both of you. We appreciate what you do there firsthand, how hard both these individuals work in the departments. I want to introduce another one of our staff persons, Child Nutrition Director, a man called Hensley. And I had a board request to update them on the universal free breakfast. We brought that to them several months ago. Pretty excited about that opportunity.
Chairman Reinhardt, Dr. Baldwin, members of the board, I have great news. We compared 2011, same time period, up to, up to now. And 2011, our year-to-date total was 442,333 breakfasts. This year with universal free, it's 711,770. Daily average, 2011, it was like 65.5. This year, it's 10,316. So a lot of children are eating. We see across the board that all of our children, regardless of their status, we see an increase. And I think the principals that are here would all say yay because I think it's been a real plus to the schools. One middle school principal said that they seemed calmer starting the day in the school. The second chance breakfast was written, an article was written by the student, the students in their newspaper about how impressed they were and how much they were enjoying it. So some of them eat the universal free and then actually purchase more food at the second chance. But if you didn't eat at the first offering, you can get your breakfast at the second chance. And that's mostly just in high schools. So we are doing well. We're holding our own financially and I'm delighted with those numbers. I don't know how all of you feel, but I think it's wonderful that our children are getting breakfast and that we've seen in such, you know, this amount of time, that large of an increase.
Any questions or comments?
I guess we're holding our own as far as the money goes.
True.
I know we get a larger reimbursement for the free breakfast. So are we actually making more money possibly? I'm just curious.
Well, of course, our goal is to break even. And that's always our goal is to break even. You do, you do have a lot of variables in child nutrition that you couldn't begin to predict or to budget for and you just deal with them as they come. But when I say we're holding our own, we're paying all that we have to pay that would be incurred by providing the universal free breakfast to our students. So are we profitable yet? We don't ever in child nutrition know we're profitable or not, or we're breaking even or we're losing until we start turning that corner in March. And that's, that's just how it is nationwide because you start the year with so many, so much funds going out, there are so many expenses and there is no reimbursement coming in initially.
As soon as you have those figures, April timeframe, would you give us an update on that?
Sure.
Maybe in an email or?
I'd be glad to do that.
Thank you.
Regarding our budget for the 2013-2014 school year, which will be here before we know, I wanted to make you aware of my intent to schedule a board work session for budget in early March and to review the previous budget data in addition to giving some, hopefully some updates from the general assembly. And it certainly would be a good opportunity for us to reconnect our budget with the approved strategic plan that all of us were so involved with. And if recall, if you recall, we took that budget and connected it to the strategic plan. We also asked you as a board to come together and provide some thoughts on program enhancements. Those were identified last week, so we want to bring those to the table as well as open it up for any new thoughts that you might have, some open discussion for additional ideas and budget adjustments. So that's coming tomorrow. In closing, it's hard to believe, but our first semester is quickly coming to a close. I actually see some high school principals that have smiles on their faces. That is rare. But they know too that the semester will end, I guess officially on Monday of next week. Our new start will be the 15th on Tuesday. And this is the first year statewide. We've gone to online and of course testing. We started out just feeling really good about things and then it got a little stressful, Mr. Phillips, right? But not necessarily because of anything that we really had this, had control over. We were pointing the finger at Raleigh. That's, that's where the problems came up. So they're working hard too. And the end of the day tomorrow, that will complete the regular testing. So we are very excited that we made it through a semester. Is it safe to say without? No, don't say anything. Okay. Without, without that dirty word. That concludes my comments.
All right. Ms. Baldwin, do we have some employees to recognize?
Is Linda Piper here? Hello, Linda. Linda has been with us for 20 years. She is currently an instructional assistant at Oakley Elementary. Linda, I didn't have a chance to talk to you before the meeting. Have you worked elsewhere in the system or?
Kindergarten.
Kindergarten.
Years ago.
20 years in kindergarten. I see that Linda's wearing a snowflake around her neck. Is that a, is that a hantora? Thank you. I could say that. We also have an employee that none of you will recognize. She's our chief financial officer who's been in state service for 30 years. Mary gave me a 15-minute explanation of why she's been with us for 30 years. I am going to spare you. But Mary has worked in a lot of different capacities. Mary, you've been with us though since?
As of 5:00 this afternoon, I've been here exactly 25 years.
25 years today. That's all of that.
All right. Good news?
Moving on to more good news. We have a young lady with us tonight that it was my pleasure to meet a year ago. She was in the first Mandarin Chinese class that A.C. Reynolds ever had with Singapore teacher Su Si Chan, with whom I have become friends. And I assisted Su Si and her students last year in fundraising, lots of fundraising, including one very rainy, cold, drizzly, 6:00 AM Sunday, the same day that we opened Tins? Evelyn, Tins, Evelyn. One of those schools. We were out in the, in the rain raising money at a swap meet, the Smiley's Flea Market. But more importantly, after Alex Burnett got back from China, she continued her work as an excellent musician at A.C. Reynolds. I thought of this in capacity with the A.C. Reynolds J.R.O.T.C. because Alex is in R.O.T.C. In fact, I'm keeping my fingers crossed that she will join my son, who is a graduate at West Point and Alex is trying to go to West Point. But the reason she's here today is that she and her band director, Sean Smith, are going to start walking this way. Alex just had a very unique experience as the representative, one of fewer than 200, she's not going to tell you how many exactly, but 125 students across the country who participated in this year's All-American Army Band. So Mr. Smith, if you want to say a couple of words about Alex and then we'll hear from Alex about that experience.
I just want to take a couple of minutes and say thank you for having us this evening. This is actually my, end of my first semester as a Buncombe County employee. I'm brand new to the county. I moved here from Henderson County and I just want to thank you for having the opportunity to work in Buncombe County. I've had a fantastic experience here so far and I want to say thank you. And the Sellers too for believing in me. But on to Alex. I have been just very fortunate to, to be able to be her instructor for a half year. I can't take credit for the person she is. That is due to her former director, Dr. Bryant, her middle school director, Greg Love, and I'm sure other people that taught her music along the way. But if there's one thing I can say about Alex, she is, is a really driven individual and just has been a fantastic leader for me around the school and a fantastic friend to me to, in my first semester here. When I was going the wrong way, headed down the wrong path, she let me know that I needed to go the other direction. And I most certainly appreciated that. She is, I was watching streaming online with my two children. I have a five-year-old and an eight-year-old. And we were watching some video of her in San Antonio rehearsal and we'd see this streak of lightning go past the screen real fast as she was marching. I'd say, guys, look, look, look. But just can't tell you how proud I am of you and all your accomplishments. And I just feel fortunate to have been your director for just this half year. Congratulations.
My week in San Antonio was absolutely phenomenal and life-changing. I mean, we rehearsed from 8:00 AM in the morning until 10:00 o'clock at night, taking breaks for lunch and dinner. We rehearsed straight and it was in the bitter cold, like in the 20s and 30s with wind chill. We were dressed in like a drinking machine. And they forgot to bring scissors to cut the gloves for the clarinets, so we were marching without gloves. So it was really cold. I've never been so cold in my life. But it was, it was incredible. It was incredible marching with so many students of such a high caliber, even those that were not playing, that were playing on like the lower parts, were still all-state musicians. They were still the principal players at their schools. I mean, they were still absolutely amazing players and just being able to play with them was, it was life-changing. I, I know that the highlight of my experience, probably the first day, I had to fly to San Antonio on December 31st, so we had like a big New Year's Eve party. We went out to the balcony and there were about 300,000 people just lining the streets and because we were going to watch big fireworks at the San Antonio Tower. But they didn't have an official countdown, so we were just going to wait for the fireworks. But I was like, the heck with that, I'm going to have a countdown. So I got, I got my phone out and went online and found an actual countdown and I let all 300,000 people on their countdown. Started at 20 and then they caught on, they caught on by 18. It was, it was a good feeling. I was like, all right, mission accomplished. So that's probably how I experienced it. What else to say?
Congratulations.
We also have with us this evening Donna James. I did not know Donna because I only came in 2008, but an interesting thing about Donna is that she actually worked on what was then the SACS accreditation process for Buncombe County Schools, developing the strategic plan for 2006 through 2011. She was Ms. Candy Sellers, is that correct? She doesn't look like it. She left us and she went to become the North Carolina State Director for Advanced Ed. And she is here with us this evening to present our accreditation on a nice beautiful plaque. Donna, would you like to come down and tell us a little bit about it?
Thank you. And if you can give us a board chair and say, there's like a topic. Well, Mr. Reinhardt, members of the board, and Dr. Baldwin, it absolutely is my pleasure to be here tonight to present this re-accreditation plaque that recognizes re-accreditation for Buncombe County Schools. And as Jan said, that was one of my last duties before I retired from the school system was to facilitate the process the first time. So I really have a vested interest and an emotional attachment to, to this process and especially as it relates to Buncombe County Schools. So what I, a couple of things that I, that I would like to say tonight is that Buncombe County is one of 61 accredited districts across the state of North Carolina. But what's really significant about that is this. Buncombe County was the sixth accredited district when this district accreditation process was initiated back in 2005. So as is typical in Buncombe County, we're, we lead the path, we don't follow. And I felt like that was important to recognize again tonight that you're in the second round of this process. And I hope as a result of this, that it reinforces again, and it obviously has because the new strategic plan is in place, that we recognize that when we look at what we do as a system and we come together as stakeholders to make those decisions in a transparent and focused always on what's best for kids, we always end up with good results. And to identify again that part of the work of the team when they were here is to look at the documentation and spend the day at central office. And the best day of all is when the team is in the schools to see the work that's going on there. And then to come back and to identify the strengths which result in the commendations and a reminder of the significance of those, of those commendations. You all were recognized for your highly effective culture of collaboration, which has been in place for a very long time and that the, the team recognized that. And as I was listening to Dr. Baldwin's comments to the board and the reports from the staff, the team also recognized that Buncombe County is always looking at being innovators and taking proactive stances on the issues that face the school system. The team also recognized that Buncombe County Schools has identified their new normal and the fact that the demographics in the school system have shifted and that as a result of that, it, it, it causes the leaders and everyone in the system to think differently about the work that about the work that needs to be done. The success of the graduation initiative, which was like a yes, because that was just beginning, it was in the beginning stages of its implementation when I left the system. And so it was really wonderful to read that in the report, that the results of that really important work were also recognized by the team. And something that's near and dear to my heart was the recognition of the job-embedded high-quality professional learning that's provided across the system or staff. So because this process is also based on continuous improvement, it's important to recognize the strengths, which we just outlined, but also the system was left with required actions that are designed to build on what's currently going on in the system to take you to the next level. So with that being said, it does give me great pleasure tonight to present to Mr. Reinhardt and Dr. Baldwin the plaque that recognizes this significant accomplishment by the district. So congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Donna. And kudos to Candy Sellers and Suzanne Swanger and everybody else who assisted with that. Your long process, it was quite an arduous process, for those who may not be aware. And I'm going to slide in one other piece of good news, based on a meeting I was at this week and the week before. I have with us Byron Bryan, Byro, not Byron, Bryan. Byro's sitting behind you, Bryan. Bryan, come on up. Bryan's going to tell you about something that our students are doing, and hopefully you will all do, and hopefully everyone in this room will choose to do when you hear about it.
Thank you, Jan. Thank you Chairman Reinhardt and Tony, it's great to see you, and all guests here. I have something really exciting and fun and positive to talk to you about. Six years ago, a group of us of five people, just five business leaders in Asheville area, got together and decided, "We wanted to do something crazy. We wanted to put on an event every year, once a year, where we would bring in a world-class speaker, a speaker that normally costs a whole lot of money to come to see, and to bring the speaker to the community and charge a ridiculously low price." Crazy idea, which meant we had to talk them into doing it for free. In other words, they had to believe in free speech. And so the first year we did it, the five of us thought, "Well, maybe we could get 100 people to show up." We managed to get a free room at the Barrow Park Inn. We had 611 people show up. Instead of charging, there are these kinds of events around the country, they usually cost $100 to $200 for people to go to. We decided we'd charge 20. And we only decided to charge 20 so we'd know that people were committed. Well, suddenly we had $12,000 we weren't counting on. So we thought, "Well, what we'll do with this is give it to charities." And so this is going to be our sixth year of having this event, it's called Lessons in Leadership. We brought in these world-class speakers, we donate every cent, no one's ever made a cent from it. We're not even an organization, we're an organism, that's all we are. We're five to six, now we're up to about 10 people who love to give a gift to the community. And this year, we're taking a real jump. We are bringing on January 29th, it's now at Kimmel Arena on UNCIA campus, where the Bulldogs play basketball. This year, we're bringing in Dr. Nito Cabane. He is one of the 10 top speakers in the world. His normal speaking fees would pay for a lot of those universal breakfasts, I'll tell you that. And he's coming for free. And we also open with a local community speaker. This year is a story that is astonishing, a young woman named Jennifer Mayer, who is the founder of Charlotte Street Computers. Her story is one that really touches on the power of education, the power of heart. This evening, the evening is all about personal leadership, thriving on change, breakthroughs. It affects parents, it affects teachers, and this year, we're most excited because we are joined with the school district to try to make a difference for kids. And so this year, again, it's only $20. We have these little cards out there that you can find out all the information. We're going to try to bring a minimum of 160 needy kids, high school kids, I don't know, maybe some middle school kids, to the event this year. The story of Nito Cabane, if you don't know, he came to America as a teenager with $50 in his pocket and not a word of English. Today, he's the president of High Point University. He is a world-renowned speaker, he is a tremendous success story that started from the power of education. So we are real excited, and the simple process is this, I want to encourage, first of all, everyone on the board, everyone in the audience, every teacher, every principal, every student to come to this event. Don't miss it. It's on Tuesday night, it's 19 days from now, January 29th. It goes from 5:30 when networking begins until about 8 o'clock, 8:15 will be done with all the presentations. The actual presentation starts at 6:30. Again, it's only $20. You go to WNCleaders.com to register, WNCleaders.com. And what we're asking, even if you can't attend, which would be a mistake, but if you can't attend, we encourage you to sponsor a student. I just sent in today a $100 check to the Buncombe County School Foundation personally, so I'm going to sponsor five of these students. This is a night that can change kids' lives. One thought can take a child who didn't see a way and help them see possibilities they never saw before. And that's really what this is all about. It really is a gift. People always look at us and say, you know, "What is this really about? What are you trying to?" We're trying to give a gift to this community. But a gift is worth nothing if you don't open it. So I encourage you all to get behind this event, it's very simple to enroll. Bring some students, if you can't come, enroll a student who will possibly come out of that with a whole new outlook on the rest of their lives. So I really appreciate the opportunity to speak to you tonight. This is the weirdest, I'm a professional speaker, actually, but I've never spoken to two sides of the room at the same time. My tendency was to want to go this way, but then they'd have to deal with my ball reason, and the glare would be terrible. So I wish you all great joy, let's make 2013 the best year ever, and really get behind this event. Let's fill that room with students, with faculty, with you. Thanks so much.
And the good news is, these little cards, if you want a reminder, are right at the back there, and we've got extras, in fact, I've got more in my office, I can run yet. So thank you, and that's all good news.
Something that I meant to do earlier today, and I failed with kind of the rush of getting in here and trying to get started. We have a special guest with us tonight, his name's Ezekiel Finley. He's here with, working on, I guess, your Eagle Scout? Yeah? He's with the scout group number 26, is that right, out of Arden? So I just wanted to recognize him, and he's here with his dad and your mom, both, yeah? Okay. We appreciate you guys coming out, and good luck with working on all your credits. Thank you.
Next on the agenda is our curriculum feature, Ms. Swanger.
Mr. Reinhardt, Superintendent Baldwin, board members, good evening. One word for Donna before she leaves, on Tuesday morning, we went over our strategic plan and made lots of revisions, additions, it's a live document and will be posted very soon. So lots of new data as we continue keeping that document alive and well, so work at will. This evening, we are continuing with the safety theme on plan, but we want to talk a little bit about why minutes matter. In July of 2012, House Bill 837 was signed into law that says, "We must teach our students CPR, and they must accomplish this to graduate." This is effective for the class of 2015 and beyond. However, data collection begins this year, and it also aligns with our new healthful standards. So we have Debbie Bright, our health educator from Buncombe County Schools, and she's going to tell us how we're meeting this very important unfunded mandate.
Thank you, Chairman Reinhardt, members of the board, and Dr. Baldwin, for allowing us just a few minutes of the meeting tonight to be able to share with you the progress that we are making in this endeavor. First of all, why do we even need CPR instruction in our school? Well, of course, we want to make sure that we're teaching our students lifesaving compression-only skills, CPR skills, that will empower them to take action during a cardiac emergency. You know, we all hope and pray that we never are in that position, and most of us have probably had some form of CPR training at some point in our life, but you never know when it might be needed. And around 88% of cardiac arrests or cardiac emergencies actually take place in the home. So this will benefit, you know, families in our community with our students being able to perform this lifesaving skill. They will be able to be a lifesaver instead of a bystander, because sometimes, even though we think we know, we're not real sure, you know, if we know the correct number of breaths to be able to do the compressions and the combination, well, now it's changed a little bit so that we are now only doing compression-only CPR, and that's what the skills that our students will be taught. Research shows that if CPR begins immediately after an emergency, that the patient's chance for survival almost doubles. So we want to make sure that a patient, or the person undergoing the emergency does not go further than four, you know, between four and six minutes without blood flow to the brain. So that's our area of concern. Here's our action plan that we'll be following. The state actually came through with a checklist, and this is our guidelines that's been issued from the North Carolina Department of Public Instruction, on what it is that we really need to make sure that the students are participating in. There's four areas on the checklist. One deals with awareness, one deals with knowing how to call 911, and the information that you need to be able to share when you make that 911 call. Compressions, and that's the actual skills test that the students will participate in, and then the use of AED devices. We'd like to thank, first of all, Mr. Frank Costa Blanco, who is the Director of Cardiac Emergencies at Mission Hospital. He has enabled us and helped us with the training of over 91 of our health and physical education teachers. They were trained on our Professional Development Day in October. Since that time, he has actually helped us in training over 1,200 high school students so far, and we really appreciate his contribution to our efforts here. The CPR will actually be taught in eighth and ninth grade this year. It, as Ms. Swanger did mention, it is in our eighth-grade helpful living essential standard. So after this year, once we get caught up, catching up that 2015 graduating class, we will only be teaching this hopefully in our eighth grade, and then that's the students from that point on. And we'll only be working with those students who enroll or come in as a transfer student at that point. This year's action plan for meeting the requirements for the 10th graders, it's a little different because we only have one required physical education component in our schools as part of graduation. So usually after ninth grade, our students do not have a physical education class. So if we miss them in ninth grade, then it can be detrimental, and we'll be playing catch-ups until then. So we are, we have a plan in place that we're going to be collaborating with our, the Health Living Department, and the Career Tech programs will be working together to help make sure that the 10th graders will be certified in each of the high schools, working with the allied health staff and their students there. I want to show you just a short, very short, it's a one-minute video that's presented by the American Heart Association, this will give you an idea of-
If you see a teen or adult suddenly collapse, it's important to act fast. Helping to save a life is easier than you might think. Just start hands-only CPR. The first step is to send someone to call 911, or call 911 yourself, then get directly over the victim. Put the heel of one hand in the center of the chest, then put your other hand on top of the first, then push hard and fast in the center of the chest until help arrives. It's important to push at a rate of at least 100 beats per minute, which is about the same tempo with a song of the same line. Let's hope you never have to use hands-only CPR. But if you see a teen or adult suddenly collapse, don't be afraid to try it. Remember, call 911, then push hard and fast in the center of the chest until help arrives. Your actions can help save a life. To learn more, call 877-888-4CPR, or visit heart.org/handsonlycpr.
Okay, are we ready to start breaking out in the-
Thanks, that's a change.
That's been a really good tool for the students to be able, even though most of our students say, "I've never heard of that song." They really, they pick up on it very quickly, though. Our skills test actually involves the compression only. The first task that the students will be asked to do is, of course, survey their surroundings and find out exactly what's happening around them. They'll call 911, look, listen, and feel for any signs of breathing, and they'll position the victim for the compressions, and then they'll ensure that these compressions are performed at a depth of two inches at a rate of 100 beats per minute. They'll continue those compressions until the victim begins breathing on their own again, or until emergency personnel arrives. The state also gave us some guidelines of how to actually administer these skills tests delivery. Most of our students will fall in that standard category of one, the standard assessment. That means that they are able to not only perform the skills, but also can verbally tell us exactly how to do that, and we'll actually go through the whole process of performing that on our mannequins. The assessment number two is an assessment with modification. This is for students who may have some difficulty performing the skill physically, but they can do so with a modification, such as a student who might have arthritis, they may not be able to use their hands to do the compression, but they might be able to use their elbow, or they may be able to tie a tennis ball, wrap a tennis ball around their hand, and be able to use that to perform those compressions, to make sure that it is getting two inches deep. The level three will be for our students who maybe physically can't perform the compression only, but they can verbally tell or coach someone on how to do the skill. And then we'll work with our PT and our Special Services Department to actually find out and identify those students who that might benefit. And then finally, in the stage four, that will be very few of our students, but that will be the students who will be exempted for medical reasons, they just can't physically or mentally perform those skills. During the week of April 15th this year, we'll be hosting a CPR Olympics again, this will be the second annual competition, and this will involve having a presentation for our students that allows them to come up with some innovative and creative ways to teach compression-only CPR to their peers. And as part of our instruction in certifying our students here, we are actually encouraging them to do that and be able to participate in April with that endeavor. It's a competition, and they also do a demonstration of skills, and it involves the judges being from our area of paramedics and nurses and other healthcare professionals. We had several schools that participated last year, and we're hoping to increase that number for this year. We'd like to, at this time, do a community recognition. We'd like to recognize Frank Costa Blanco, who is an RN and the Director of Cardiac Emergencies at Mission Hospital. He has been wonderful to work with in not only training our students, our staff, the helpful living staff, but also he's agreed to come out to teach a Model One class for our teachers, and allowing them to, kind of get themselves, to allow them a little time to feel comfortable in the procedure and the process of actually teaching these skills. And so he's been, as I mentioned earlier, we've had over 1,200 of our students already this semester go through the process and become certified. This documentation will then go into our students' permanent records so that it shows up on their transcripts, so that they will be able to graduate beginning in 2015 with this mandate already taken care of. So I'd like to recognize at this time Frank Costa Blanco and his recognition for his willingness to teach lifesaving skills throughout the community, and we'd like to applaud his contribution to our efforts in meeting the CPR graduation requirement for students in Buncombe County. Please join me in applauding Frank.
A board and, I guess, just public, everybody's here tonight, I just want to say a couple of words. In terms of leadership, like Ms. James was saying earlier, we are definitely the leaders here in western North Carolina, especially in this initiative. I work with two cardiologists who set up statewide systems, and what they do all the time is, "Hey, what are you guys doing out there?" Because we literally set the standard for the rest of the state. They take the credit, but we do the work here, so it's okay, though. This is a big, big thing. The national survival rate for a cardiac arrest is less than 8%. So your chance of surviving a cardiac arrest is very minimal. In this state- In this state, it's less than 5% because of the rural nature of where we live. So it's something that we can do huge amounts for. When Debbie was talking about the initial compressions, what you're doing is you're buying time. When you collapse, you're literally pushing the blood from your heart up to your brains. It's your brain that dies. So that's what we're teaching these kids, in addition to, obviously, not only about the functions of the heart, but also about nutrition, smoking, and exercise, and how those play a big role in it. So we kind of mix it up a little bit, high school kids, elementary school kids. We've taught 1,200 so far this fall and over 16,000 residents in western North Carolina in two years. So we've definitely taken this under heart and done a lot, a lot of volunteers, a lot of paramedics and nurses from our areas are doing this. And lastly, I'm just going to tell you guys a very personal story, so I want you to look at the right side of my face. There's a huge well right here, a little bit here as well. Two days ago, I stepped out of a car in the middle of the day and started walking, and all of a sudden I collapsed, literally. Didn't catch myself, didn't trip, but just down, caught my face. Now, I was out for about three seconds. Luckily, I was with nurses. They literally flipped me over, and one person put their hand on my chest when I started gasping. Now, whether or not I had a cardiac arrest, I don't know, I'm going to get a slew of tests starting to- But the point is that it really hit home. I have three kids at home, you know, a wife, a dog, they all count on you. So it's something that, this is really, really even more personal now, because it could have ended like that, and it's, it's the only warning sign you get. A cardiac arrest is it. You either go down and you survive, or you don't. So this is something that all these kids, when they come home and they talk about this, really encourage them. They are now taking matters into their own hands, and they can be lifesavers. We are empowering our kids. Even five-year-old kids that I teach in kindergarten, they're not going to be strong enough to do CPR, but they can pull out their cellphone, and they can call 911. So, thank you. I appreciate you supporting this. Thank you, guys. Thank you.
Mr. Sizemore, would you mind coming up for a few minutes? I know at the November meeting, we all had a chance to think of Mr. Sizemore as leaving the board after six years of service, and so the board, we put something together for you that I'm sure is going to be worth a lot of money one day. It has all the signatures on there of the board members and quite a few of the administrators in the central office. So, we just, again, people, being on the board takes a lot of time, and a lot of time away from your family, a lot of time away from your job. Being board chair, every time is ten. And so, as many of you may or may not know, Mr. Sizemore served for two years as the chairman of Buncombe County School Board. And his wife actually gave me, at one time, some aspirin. She said, "Keep this in your bag, so when Steve has a heart attack, we have some aspirin that we can give him." And now we know how to do the CPR. But, again, we want to appreciate the years of service that you have to the Buncombe County School. I know your, your kids are getting ready to graduate, or the last ones that are in the TC are getting ready to graduate, twins, getting ready to move on to college here in, here in just a few months. Steve and I have been, became friends about the same time that I came on the board. Our daughters played soccer together in the Highland Football Club, and then they competed against each other. My daughter goes to St. John's, and of course Steve goes to Robertson. My daughter went to the TC Robertson prom with his son. So, you can tell, we have quite a relationship with the families, and so we appreciate knowing you, Jill, and your kids, and the amount of sacrifice that they make to sharing with the school system. And we just, we appreciate everything you've done.
It's kind of bittersweet, you know, to be here and not to have the podium that I would have otherwise had. I do want to say thank you, and I think it's incredibly honored to have the opportunity to serve on this board, to work with the school system and the people that have been involved in the school system, and most importantly, the community. I would like to take the time to address and thank each person that I've had so many contacts with, and I think if I tried to do that, the meeting would be longer than it normally is, and it would not only be a board meeting, but a boring meeting, I think, for many of you. But it's, it really has been quite an honor for me to have the opportunity to work with the board and with the school system, and certainly to make the friends that I would not have otherwise been able to make working on this board, and with the, with the people in the school system. I grew up in Buncombe County. My parents were both teachers, and my wife and I both went to Robertson, or Robertson Schools, and graduated. She's graduated two years after I did, not before. And then we had the opportunity to come back and raise our kids in this community, and we, I wouldn't have it any other way. I think it's the most wonderful place to be and to raise your children, and I think Buncombe County School System is, I think, has been indicated as a leader and will continue to be. And I hope that we keep on that same track, and I know with leadership on this board, and with Dr. Baldwin at the helm of the school system, I think. So, thank you all very much.
Ms. Blunt, do we have anyone signed up for public comment? One second. Just a reminder, everyone will have three minutes, and I keep the time, and I'll let you know when it's there. And your name was Ms. Beck. Thank you.
I had a childhood at Tannen's Community High School. This is the only high school in Buncombe County that does not have a school resource officer. I went to the school, spoke with principals. I had the school actually locked down by the assistant principal, and he had someone lock the door, stand by the door. But to today, there's still no officer there at that high school. Every student and every staff member in that school should be guarded and have some kind of security. As well as, the same day I was there, I was also, I was nervous, y'all, I'm sorry. It's the first time I've ever done this. But I'm doing this for my son. I also was told by the principal that the cafeteria was too small in the school, that every child in the school was not able to get into the cafeteria, that some of the students were sitting outside of the school in the cold to eat their lunch, because it's a fire hazard for them all to be inside at the same time. I don't know what to say about that. I mean, these are our kids that are sitting outside, that's not right. So that's why I wanted to bring to you guys tonight.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Beck.
Jane Bellovo. Yes. I am Jane Bellovo, and I am the Chair of the Ashville Tea Party. However, I'm here not just representing 1,140 of us, but I'm here as a retired teacher of 33 years, who taught in three states, New York, California, and North Carolina, all gun-free school zones. Gun-free school zones have proven to be invitations to mentally deranged sociopaths to commit mass murders, because they know there is no one who will meet them with equally deadly force. Statistics bear this out. Columbine, Virginia Tech are but a few. Sandy Hook was our latest tragedy. Deranged killers don't knock. They don't wait to be buzzed in. They do not respect school rules. They do not go to the main office for a visitor's pass. They have no regard for our laws, and least of all, they have no regard to life. Killers get their choice of weapons illegally. They don't wait. There are no waiting periods. 64,999,987 firearms owners killed no one yesterday. The most dangerous cities in the United States, like Chicago, have the strictest gun control laws. Statistics show that those states and cities with the most restrictive gun control laws have the highest crime rates, murders. Mass murders are committed in these gun-free zones, and the federal government is a guilty accomplice. Since the enactment of the 1993 Gun-Free School Zone Act, there has been a 370% increase in violent school deaths. Since the law was enacted, we went from one incident every decade to four. While fire drills and lockdown drills are essential to maintain control and to minimize panic, they are far from enough. Killers know the drills, too. The time between the 911 call and the police arrival is when mass murder occurs, in every single situation. They do so with impunity. Deadly force needs to be met with deadly force. These killing sprees are also not unique to schools but other gun-free zone venues like restaurants, parks, and lakes. Gun-free zones do not work and never will. Why? Because evil is a reality, it's not a word. We cannot get rid of it. But we do have an inalienable right to defend ourselves from those who would do us harm. That inalienable right is enshrined in our Second Amendment of our Constitution. I represent many who would like the Buncombe County School Board to come up with a viable plan to make our schools defensible places-
Thank you, Ms. Bellovo.
-from these deranged killers.
Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Deborah Miles, and I'm here tonight, I work with the Center for Diversity in Education at UNC Asheville, and I'm here tonight representing Safe Schools for All in support of No Name Calling Week, which is January the 21st through 25th. According to the White House Project Stop Bullying Now, people who are targets of bullying are more likely to skip or drop out of school, and they have more thoughts of suicide that persist into adulthood. People who bully others are more likely to have criminal convictions. In one study, 60% of males who bullied others in middle school had a criminal conviction eight, criminal conviction by the age of 24. Safe Schools for All is a community collaboration whose partners include Buncombe County Schools, and I especially want to thank Debbie Browning and David Thompson and Jan Blunt, who worked with us on this committee, along with Asheville City Schools, Evergreen Charter School, the Mediation Center, the Jewish Community Center, Youth Outright, and the YMCA, among other organizations. We ask that every adult in our community have a conversation about bullies and bystanders with your children during No Name Calling Week. There are many resources that can help parents, teachers, youth leaders, coaches, and many others engage with students to stop bullying in our community, before another child is depressed or fearful, before another child skips school, and worst of all, before another child commits suicide. I hope every person listening to this understands the urgency. Not one more student should take their own life, in our community or in any community, because of being bullied. This week, we will be sending out posters and bookmarks for the events related to No Name Calling Week. If anyone here would like to receive these, they can email me at dmiles@unca.edu. I also have a couple of thousand of these bookmarks we can send to folks. And these, this work is really directed at our parents and teachers of the adults in our community to educate about best practices. Also, if any organization wants to join the Coalition, we urge them to do so, and you can also email me, and I'll put you on that list. And in closing, I'd like to read some poems that students at Glen Arden wrote as haikus and quatrains for No Name Calling Week. This is Megan from Glen Arden. "We are strongest in numbers, never ever call names back. I stand up for others." And Tabias, who is also from Glen Arden. You're powerful. You can stand up for people. Help your friends out there. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Miles.
Dr. Carol Brothers. I'm here on behalf of the Asheville Jewish Leadership Collaborative with a letter to the members of the board. Dear Board Members, on November 8th, 2012, the Buncombe County School Board passed a motion that set a procedure on how board directors, directives were to be administered. Out of concern that these procedures would delay the directives that board member Lisa Baldwin initiated, she responded by registering objections that used references to Hitler. The two comments were as follows. Addressing Chairman Bob Reinhardt, she said, "If I come to the next meeting, do I need to say 'Hi, Hitler'?" A few minutes later, she again addressed Mr. Reinhardt, "Right, Hitler, I forgot. I'm sorry, I just had to say that." The undersigned members of the Asheville Jewish Leadership Collaborative, as representatives of the Jewish community, are here to go on record to object to trivializing Hitler and the Holocaust during a publicly scheduled meeting of the Buncombe County School Board. The Holocaust led to the murder of 6 million Jews and 5 million Roma's, gays, lesbians, disabled people, Jehovah's Witnesses, Christian rescuers, communists, and anyone who resisted the maniacal popular Nazi movement. A total of 11 million individuals were intentionally targeted for annihilation, wiping out entire towns, families, cultures, and communities. Hitler was not just a figure of popular culture to be referenced when everyone feels they're being treated unfairly, but a person from living memory whose crimes still haunt Holocaust survivors that live in our communities who suffered so terribly at the hands of the Nazis. There's nothing that has occurred on this school board's proceedings that in any way has come close to the violence and horror initiated by Hitler. We understand and appreciate that this was an unfortunate choice of words on the part of Ms. Baldwin, and nothing malicious toward the Jewish community was intended. Nevertheless, as leaders of our community, we are here to express our concerns about these comments. This inappropriate use of historical references sets a very bad example for 26,000 school students and their families in Buncombe County. We ask that the text of what is now being read be entered into the public record of the January school board meetings, and that henceforth, all board members carefully choose their words in referencing accurate historical analogies. Sincerely, the Asheville Jewish Leadership Collaborative," and this is signed by 34 members of Jewish organizations in Buncombe County.
Thank you, Dr. Brothers.
Thank you.
Fred Meyer.
Lisa Baldwin's infamous outburst at the November school board meeting was regrettable, but her refusal to acknowledge and apologize for her comparison of the chairperson to Nazi Germany went beyond regretful to shameful. The comment was an insult not just to the chair and those of the Jewish faith, but to all those victimized during the 13 years the Nazis were in power, and nearly as shameful as the lack of reaction of the board. It is not for me to enumerate other victims of the Nazi years. Any educated person is aware that many denominations and cultures, both ethnic and social, were persecuted. Ignorance is no excuse for using a reference as becoming all too commonplace in our culture, but to hear that at a school board meeting is unheard of. In a follow-up article, Lisa Baldwin referred to her, quote, "superficial remarks." Try suggesting superficial to a Holocaust survivor, to one who lived through the cruelty of those years, or to a member of a family who lost a loved one fighting defeat Hitler. But there's more at stake here than just the appearance of civility at a board meeting. What's at stake is an instructional moment for both the- What's at stake is an instructional moment for both the students and the board's care and the community at large. I urge the board to seize that moment by issuing a strong, straightforward denunciation of her outrageous reference to the worldwide plight that was Nazi Germany. Fascism starts with statements such as Lisa Baldwin uttered. Face in history and ourselves, recognized throughout the world as the leading organization dedicated to educating our children against imperils of intolerance, and the Center for Diversity Education, the local organization that for years has been an outstanding job which all of your children have been from, teaches that to be a bystander is to be a perpetrator. If the present board bails to publicly censure her remark, each of you, each one of you becomes an unwitting accomplice, bestowing silent tacit approval on her remarks. Everyone is entitled to their opinion and has a right to express it. Everyone is not entitled to use their elected position in a public forum to offend society with hateful speech. Regardless, she is a member of the board's alliance that allows the remark to stand and therein lies the rough. This board made the decision to allow dissemination of religious literature to schools. Okay? Having made the decision, do we then forgive those remarks, those utterances that promote a culture contrary to which you wish your students to believe in? To invoke a moment that no religion would tolerate? Will you, as a board, have the courage, the courage to censure a remark that in its meaning is antithetical to everything all religions stand for? You can't have it both ways. Your options are to demand a public apology, censure the person for the remarks, or as a board, be hypocritical in your actions, and that bystanders live with that position. Your choice. We're still watching, and I request that these comments be entered into the minutes.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Reinhardt, PDPC, Mr. Chairman, and members of the Board of Education. You know, this subject is, now I'm feeling like it's being talked about so much, I'm wondering if I should even be up here, because I see that it's becoming clearer and clearer that the actions that are being taken by the school board, and probably what's happening in the meetings of the commissioners and the city council in Asheville, are addressing these issues, and they are on alert, and they're moving forward. But on the 14th of December, I watched the news that night, and after having seen multiple times these events happening around the United States and having children in the public school system, I woke up on Saturday morning and said that I had to do something. I wrote immediately to the commissioners, I wrote to the city council members of Asheville, and asked them to act on this and not to hesitate another moment. My daughter attends a public school in the county that is unprotected, and has been unprotected since she has been there. I know that there's an A1 system, there's a way of responding, but I feel that that response, the systems that are in place right now, are absolutely inadequate to be able to protect our children from an intruder that has the kind of intentions that have been happening around our country. I know to all of you that there's nothing more important than our children, and their safety comes foremost. But on the 15th or the 16th of December, I decided I would start a petition. I've never done a petition in my life. I'm almost 60 years old. It's the first time. And I said, the purpose of it is to let you know, let the county commissioners know, let the state legislators know, and let the country know how important this is to our community. I do not know how to do Facebook. I don't tweet very well. I'm doing the best I can with my email list and communicating with the people I know. I'm now communicating with the school PTA systems, getting the petition, information petition out. My goal is, by June, to have 10,000 signatures of members of Buncombe County. I right now have, as of tonight, probably by midnight, we'll have about 400. I hope by the end of the weekend, we'll have about 500. So it's moving in the right direction. The petition, I gave a copy, I left a copy, I think each one of you have there, which is exactly how it reads online. And I want you to understand, I'm not just asking, the petition is not just asking, or the people that are signing the petition are not just asking you to place an armed, on-duty police officer in schools. The petition reads, "We are asking the community leaders to direct their attention to this issue and to devise a strategy that ensures the absolute safety and security of all children attending public schools in our communities." And that was written, understanding that our elementary schools, and I understand one high school, are the schools that are unprotected in our county, that do not have an on-duty officer.
Thank you for your comments.
That's it? Anyway...
We have a copy of your petition, and we appreciate it.
And everybody's got this, you can go online and sign it. I appreciate your support. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Byron Ballard. I'm with the Mountain Area Interface Forum. I'm Senior Priestess with Mother Grove Goddess Temple and Class of '74 Anka High School. Go Jicks! And I basically just want to say thank you. And part of that is related, and I'm giving a shout out to Ms. Swanger. We were in a meeting this week looking at how the curriculum was going to interface with Religious Freedom Day, and the work that you presented was so beautifully wrought, and obviously was professional. It proved to me your, oh, I don't know, how you know that standard course of study so well, because it's a monster, but it's completely tied in. And I think when you see what that curriculum looks like, and especially with No Name Calling Week coming up, with Black History Month, with Martin Luther King Holiday, Women's History, I think we're beginning to integrate all of that sense of those three Rs, respect and responsibility and religion, into the system. And I'm really proud of the way we've worked hard for these many moments to get this done, but especially Ms. Swanger. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ballard.
Push that button. Dr. Baldwin and Dr. Adele, let me back up a little bit. First of all, Ms. Baldwin, I am sorry you were being silenced and restricted as an elected official. Such motions, such attempts infringe on all of our liberties, and we, some of us, have seen this throughout history. It tears at my heart, as it should tear at the Jewish community heart. We need to recognize these patterns of behavior and prepare for who knows what in the future. But anyhow, let me go back on to Dr. Baldwin and Dr. Adele on the Safe Schools Initiative. Love the idea of $100,000 for 24 video entry systems. Love the idea more of a defensible school zone. The last two of the four years I spent in the Buncombe County school system, I was in a room without a wall and a door. I wrote three letters to administration asking for a safe environment, requesting a room and a door. You folks have $12 billion. I believe it's called unrestricted funds. You talk about unfunded mandates. This money, as you look at what's going to work in the Safe Schools Initiative, you should do surveys related to where are those students, where are those teachers? Survey them, not just the front door. If I found myself in a situation with students we could not lock down, we were told to go across the hallway into another teacher's room. It still bothers. I was a voice crying out in the wilderness. There are other folks on this board who are voices crying out in the wilderness, and we need to be better listeners. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Humphries.
I know Chairman Reinhardt gave me an opportunity to speak about my service on the board, but I wanted to reserve my time to do that in public comment. I haven't been under a time limit on what I have said in the past, so I hope I can say this within three minutes. I believe I can. I hope you will bear with me while I express some of the motivation behind my efforts on this board. Education elevates. It elevates minds of students. It elevates the minds of educators through the advancement of the process. It elevates the community, because as each one of us becomes more knowledgeable, we become more aware, more self-assured, and more informed. With this individual and community elevation, we all become better citizens, and more involved and interrelated community. The public education system provides a platform for each and every child to have an opportunity to elevate their mind and to achieve tomorrow those things which we cannot even comprehend today. In Buncombe County, our public education system is unparalleled in the quality of our entire student population, our professional educators in our community. Educators in our system certainly include the classroom teacher, but each and every person who works with or on behalf of a student in our schools is an educator. From our community volunteers, bus drivers, custodial staff, food service personnel, school-based office staff, media center staff, assistants, counselors, teachers, and all of the amazing support personnel working out of the central office, the people who work with and on behalf of the students in this community are all educators. In addition, the significant positive impact on our public schools due to the presence and support of our school resource officers provided through the Buncombe County Sheriff's Department is immeasurable. Also, there are no words which can adequately acknowledge the gratitude which the school system and this community should and does feel daily for the hard efforts of those involved with the Evelyn Foundation. And for my part, to each of you, I humbly say thank you. I am honored to have had the opportunity to serve the Buncombe County Board of Education for six years, and to have played a small part in the amazing accomplishments of the students, educators, and our community as humbly. Serving on the board introduced me to many people whom I would not likely have had the opportunity to meet, and certainly could not have gotten to know as well as I have, but now I'm honored to call many of you friends. For the sake of time and for my opportunity to avoid tears, I will not make comment about each of you and how much you have meant to me and how much you have become a part of my life. However, I would be remiss in not mentioning a couple of people before I leave the podium. Miss Connie Jackson. Aside from my wife and my mother, I don't go up anyone, just because I better care about you and Connie. She has the constant ability to be simultaneously personal and professional. I know Connie cares for everyone with whom she works in the same way, but she makes you feel like you're the most important person in the world. You have made my tenure on this board special, and I thank you very much for that. Dr. Tony Baldwin. I will say without equivocation, Dr. Baldwin is the best person to be superintendent of Buncombe County School System.
Mr. Schlesmer, I'm sorry to interrupt you.
Are you kidding me? You were probably the next.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. I'm sure my name wasn't on there, so I had to stop you.
She'll never know why.
Ms. Baldwin? That's all? Okay. All right. All right, we have a couple of reports, and we're going to start with our annual financial report. Mr. Scott Hughes, I believe.
Yeah, I was going to say, there are four of you who have picked them up. I hope there are four left. Okay. Did everybody else get one? I have an extra one.
Ladies and gentlemen of the board, and Mr. Chairman, and Superintendent Baldwin, thank you very much for the opportunity to be your auditor again for the year ended June 30th, 2012. First, let me say that we appreciate that opportunity, and we hold you guys in immense regard. It's very refreshing to be able to truly audit a set of financial records. There are a lot of organizations in which you almost have to fix them before you can audit them, and so you guys get it. You understand. You have good systems, good people, and you want things done correctly, and we appreciate that. You have before you the Comprehensive Annual Financial Report for the year ended June 30th, 2012, along with compliance reports that cover your federal and state financial assistance programs. And then you have a communication letter that contains various communications that were required to communicate to those charged with governing us. There's roughly 200 pages of information here, and so I'm going to try and hit the high spots and hopefully allow you some opportunities to ask questions. If, in looking in these documents, some of you just apparently just received, if you have questions after this meeting night, please feel free to call me. I'd be more than happy to talk with you at any time. We're going to start with the CAFER, which is the thick document, the Comprehensive Annual Financial Report. And this document's divided into three major sections. There's an introductory section that involves a transmittal that's performed by your folks, transmitting that to the public. And then the financial section, which is the portion that we are specifically responsible for, which includes the audited financial statements. And then a statistical section. And there's a huge amount of information in that section, and we'll talk a little bit about that, but I hope that you'll spend some time in there. There's some real nuggets to mine if you really want to see what this school system does. Our main emphasis is on the financial section, as I mentioned, and on page one and two of that section is the opinion. And when you have an audit done, that's basically what you are buying. You are buying someone's opinion as to whether or not your financial statements are fairly presented in all due respect at the close of business at a period in time, and that period of time is June 30th, 2012. You've got an unqualified opinion, which is the type of opinion that everyone likes, that essentially says that we do believe your financial statements are fairly presented. Remember, then on the Gatsby Statement 34, you're now required to report both at the fund level and then at the entity-wide level. Pages 15 and 16 give you the entity-wide perspective. These statements are prepared on full accrual accounting, so they're very similar to what you would see in a business environment. Behind them is a section that deals with the funds perspective, and that's pages 17 through 24, and they're prepared on a modified accrual basis. There are reconciliations in those work papers that reconcile between the two different perspectives, and will tell you what the significant differences are in that regard. It's simply a fancy way to tell you that there are differences in how those numbers are derived. Having said that, let me point you to the CLIF notes, and this is the short section, and it's called Management's Discussion and Analysis. And your folks prepare that as well, and that's pages 3 through 14. This is a really nice summary of the financial statements, along with some comparative data between the two years, 2012 and 2011. And page six provides some of that condensed information, if you want to take a peek at that. A few things I would point out there is the fact that total assets increased a bit over $4.95 million over the previous year, and that's partly a result of construction of two new schools that were completed and placed in service during the year. The $17 million liabilities that you have at June 30th, 2012, the clear majority of that is vacation pay that would have to be paid if you were to shut down tomorrow, a liability that I hope we don't have to pay. But the fact is, that is the single largest liability that the school system has, and it's for compensated abstinence that haven't been taken. Net assets increased partially to the addition of those new fixed assets that are being capitalized, and the remainder came from operations. On page eight is a chart that provides the condensed information about the statements of revenue, expenses, and changes in net assets for the same two-year period. And I would point out that the revenues are down right at about $17 million over the prior year, and that's from county appropriations and state appropriations, partially that were used in constructing those assets as well. Note that your expenditures are up just slightly over 1% between the two years. Well, that's a quick glance at the dollars. Let me give you some additional data that you might find interesting that's in that statistical section that we talked about. First, in 2012, your average daily enrollment was 25,520. First, in 2012, your average daily enrollment was 25,521 students. That's a lot of kids. You are the second-largest employer in the county still, employing about 4,000 folks, of which 1,966 are certified. That's remarkable. You operate 23 elementary schools, 3 intermediate schools, 7 middle schools, 6 high schools, and 3 special purpose schools. You spent over $7,700 per student, and are 82nd in the state in per pupil spending period. You hold in your assets over $432 million of investment in property plant equipment, and that's historical cost. That's not what is worth in today's dollars. That's the historical cost of what you paid for those assets. These are often the numbers that folks lose sight of when you're talking about budgets. There's an awful lot of good information in that section, and I hope you'll be able to peruse that and get familiar with it. Also note that this report includes copies of the awards that your staff has received for the achievement in financial reporting, and that's on pages Roman numeral 27 and 28 in the introductory section. That takes a lot of work on their part, and they don't just hand these things out. Mary worries about everything in that report, making sure that it's going to qualify for earning that. And you earn those. Like I say, they don't just get them out. Regarding the compliance reports, our opinions are unqualified, and there are two witnesses that are identified in the financial statement area. One minor finding on, with regard to compliance on an ARA project where a check didn't clear timely. For an entity your size, this is very reasonable, very reasonable result, and management has already put into place remedies intended to address the issues that have been identified. And the DPI has already basically said that no further action will be required other than the implementation of the corrective action plan that you've already identified. The information in the separate letter to those charged with governance gives you some information about various global parameters, such as what new standards were implemented during the year, what significant estimates are required in preparing financial statements, what adjustments we did propose and consider with your staff. And those communications are required by standards. I hope that you'll take some time to understand them as well. Finally, our job is to highlight what we found. And what we found was a very large school system, who in the grand scheme of things does things right. An auditor such as myself can spend months looking and kicking and prodding and inquiring and looking at financial reports and driving your staff crazy. And if I don't find something in that amount of time, I'm not doing much. So you have an internal culture that I believe demands compliance and demands adherence to policy, and we applaud that. The results are only as good as the weakest link, I know that. But we applaud your efforts, and particularly those of your financial staff administration in trying to do it right and trying to provide good financial security over the assets of this school system. I've covered an awful lot of stuff in a very short period of time. What questions might you have?
In regards to the, you mentioned the issue with the ARA loans. Basically, we just didn't spend it fast enough once it hit our account. Is that correct?
I believe in that instance, we found one item that is supposed to have attached to a contract ARA requirements, and we found, out of all the items that we tested, we found one that didn't have that attached to it, and we expanded our scope to determine that it wasn't the case in others. That one item happened to be a fairly large expenditure, and we did recognize it as a question of cost, but it was just simply a documentation error.
Okay. I know the federal government's kind of on these grants.
Particularly with ARA, particularly with anything having to do with recovery.
Right.
Question, I read this a couple of times and couldn't quite understand it. On page seven, Roman numeral seven? No, 12. I'm sorry. Don't know my Roman numeral. It talks about the $5 million restricted, said amendments to the capital outlay fund budget failed to take this into account and a legal violation occurred. Is that a, could you explain that a little bit, what that?
That is a compliance issue with North Carolina general statutes. It's an issue that results from the curse that local education authorities have that other governmental agencies don't have. School systems can't issue their own debt. That has to be done through the county. And so what you have is your budgets or annual budgets. Any other governmental agency that would be doing a major construction project would have what's called a project ordinance, and that means that that budget follows that project from its inception to its completion. School systems don't have that ability. So what you have to do on an annual basis is plan for what expenditures in that year on that project you think you're going to have. Now, the sources of revenues that fund that are spread over that same time period, and you were toward the end of the project, and the state law requires that you cannot appropriate, can't appropriate for a subsequent year more than cash minus your liabilities. And so what happened was, you still, you had appropriated about $6 million toward a major construction project that was appropriation, and unfortunately, the cashless investments at that moment in time weren't enough to cover that.
Because the county was going to pay.
Exactly. You're dependent on the county's revenue, and they don't pay you until you submit invoices for payment of those amounts. So what in effect is happening is, is you're trying to budget as best you can for a project that spans three years, and being in the middle of it, you appropriated for that project essentially the amounts that you were anticipating getting from the government. The statute says you actually have to have them in hand in order to appropriate.
So what would be the solution to that?
There is no solution.
Thank you.
The solution is, is you can put money in that fund to meet that obligation.
Would that be a waste of money?
Well, if you put the money in there, you can't get it back out by statute.
Yeah, that's a waste of money.
So, I mean, it's one of those conundrums. It's a problem, but unfortunately, you did the best you could.
Thank you.
Any other comments, questions?
I have a question related to what Mr. Greg alluded into. I hadn't looked through, I just quickly scanned this. Is there documentation in here about our debt, total debt load, and if any county holds those deeds in front? Last I had checked, it was like $140 million. Is there cash, tax, statement, or some sort of debt information in here?
That debt is debt of the county; it's not your debt. That's, that's the difference in state law is, is that they have to incur the debt, and you get to keep the asset. It's one of the inequities of Gesbe 34. So you're up, the only debt that the school system actually reflects is a few hundred thousand dollars of debt on, on some school buses, and then the amount that you owe for compensated absences, and that goes about $7 million.
There is actually something in here about debt. I saw it, and now I can't find it.
It's in the statistical section. There's a schedule that says direct and overlapping debt, and that will give you both sides of the equation. It will show you what the county's debt is and what portion of it is distributed to school construction.
I also have a question on page 17. I just wanted to clarify the fund balances at the bottom. Is the total fund balances on the very far right-hand side, the total government fund, is that called $31 million? Is this a total for all the fund balances going across, or is that a different fund?
It's basically the five funds that you have listed there. That's the total. That would be the total for all. Keep in mind, not all of that is cash, and in a lot of cases, some of those amounts are reserved or already designated for amounts that are promised for the coming budget year.
And maybe Ms. Parker can answer this question, or I don't know if he might be able to. You know, we've been told that we have an $8 million fund balance, and I don't know if that's considered the general fund balance. Is that?
Yes. If you look at the last two entries right above the line in the first column, it says general fund. Those are the amounts that are legally available for appropriation, and they add up to about, putting it out to about $6.7 million. And that's, that's the amount that was legally available. We budgeted about half of that already to balance our current year's budget.
Okay, so there's another $7.3 million or so that is not available in that fund balance that is somehow designated as that?
Yeah. Stop if I say, he's here to check and make sure everything I'm saying is right, but if you look at the column, our total fund balance is for $14.7 million, and the general fund is what we call the global current expense fund in our budgetary balance. But there are several things that by general accepted accounting principles, and he's mentioned Gesbe 34 already. We have something called Gesbe 54 that went into effect a couple of years ago that causes us to have to say some of that isn't cash and therefore can't be appropriated, like your prepaid, your inventories, that $1.9 million amount, another $467,000 amount. Do you see there? Those aren't cash. Those are a different type of asset, because they're not cash, you can't spend them. State statutes, also the thing that he alluded to, the state statutes since 1933 in the School Budget and Fiscal Control Act have said you cannot appropriate more fund balance than your cash, minus your liabilities, minus your encumbrances. And that's where that $1,289,000 is restricted. That's by state statute. We passed a board policy last year, right before year end, about a stabilization amount that was part of our long-range plan to survive the reduction in federal funding that has helped support us while the state has decreased its funding, and that's that $4.3 million. So you subtract all those things out that are legally restricted, and you've got the $6.7 million left that is available to be appropriated out of the $14.7 million total. And again, we've appropriated about half that to balance our current budget. I updated that long-range financial plan today after I had the audited numbers, and we're very much at the same place we were when I looked at it last year. The good news in looking at that long-range financial plan, we're in a little bit better shape to survive a reduction in federal funding that we believe is coming down because of, you know, if not sequestration, just general budget cuts. So, you know, we're very much the same place we were, although our dependence on federal funding has been decreased, which I think is very, very good news for a long time. Did that help explain that? Okay, perfect.
Any other questions?
Yeah, I know you mentioned sequestration, but I know earlier this year, we talked about budget reversions. Do we have to, we already, I do have to refresh my memory, because this happened this summer. When did we send money back to the state?
Oh, we had to send that back. I believe it was before the end of July. I don't remember the exact date. The budget reversion was not quite as bad as what we had anticipated. Instead of it going up by some $1.2 million, it actually went down a little bit for one year. But they also changed the number of the rules on what we could do with ADC transfer. And as I mentioned at the time, the sun was a little retarded. Now, those two things kind of balanced each other out. So we're not in worse shape than we thought we'd be, or maybe a teeny bit better, but not a whole lot. And of course, we're waiting anxiously to see what the new General Assembly does with our funding structure. There may be some fairly significant changes going on. They've, you know, they're looking at the whole issue of should they just fund a single-dollar amount per child and do away with a structure that's been in place since about 1934. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Jan Blunt and Tim Fairley, you're up next.
I was asked to, at the last board meeting, to provide an update on options regarding the videotaping of board of education meetings. This update is going to involve some visual elements. I'm first going to use the video screens above, and then we're going to have you come down for Mr. Fairley's part two with the screen down will be a little bit better for you to see on that. But for the first part, we'll, I'll just, I'll talk while my trustee assistant helps find the location of our little video that I wanted to show you this evening. To refresh your memories, and for people who may not have been with us back in March of 2011, Ms. Baldwin introduced the motion to have the board, or pass the motion for the administration to look into videotaping meetings. We did that, and we told you about several options. One of the things I'm going to show you is what it looks like at another board, school board in Cabarrus County. Ms. Baldwin had talked about Cabarrus County and sent me information on that. So I pulled up their, we're going to pull up their school board meetings so that you can see what they do. It's a perfectly good example of what most school boards do, who do telecast. I think fewer than half of the school systems in North Carolina, and probably less than that now, because with the decline in funding, the first people who've been let go have been the video departments of most of the schools. You may be interested to know, and you may want to Google, Charlotte Mecklenburg, they had ceased a lot of their video production work, but they recently conducted an internal audit, well, actually, an external audit, and as a result of that, I believe they're putting their video back into play at a considerable extent, but they are ones that, one of the ones that will be doing that again. When we talked about it before back in 2011, what I explained, when we talk about how we distribute a video, that's different than how we create it. So the video distribution methods that you're most familiar with have to do with your own television that you see at home. That's how most people watch videos. Of course, I do have my little trust of cell phone they were talking about earlier. I now have one of the Samsung Galaxy 3s, and I got a much better deal on it, Monty, than they think, so I don't know what screen should be pulled.
You're a powerful lady.
I was powerful. But you can actually watch videos on cell phones now. You can watch it on your internet computers. But if you've tried to do that, unless you have much better eyes than I do, it's not the most productive way, even sitting here for, what, almost two and a half hours, to sit there and watch something that small for two and a half hours is not ideal. So in my personal opinion, I'd still rather watch a video on television if I can. So all of those distribution methods, your websites, your social media, the YouTube, the cable venue, the actual television, those are all possible distribution methods. But even of themselves, they do not create the video. The video still has to be created. And what I'd like to show you this evening is how a regular school board, very similar to ours, takes a school board meeting so that it's not just a record of what you did, it's not just a check and balance, though those things are very important, but it's also a method for the public who can't be with us tonight to see what goes on at the meeting, and, most importantly, to know who's talking, what they're talking about, and to see presentations.
It's getting locked, I'm not sure exactly.
Oh, Monty, Monty. Are you locked?
Not necessarily locked, it's just regardless, not working. So.
Okay. We're teaching. Okay. It doesn't really matter whether it's a work session or really, which meeting doesn't matter. What I want you to look at, I don't care whether we hear it, we're not related to the content of their meeting, but what I would like to have you see is, from a, for a production person's eye, what are they doing exactly? a production person's eye, what are they doing exactly?
Ladies and gentlemen.
In fact, turn that audio down. Okay. As you can see, a shot that would be from the back of the room where the investors of the students says it's coming, it's a static shot that was coming that way, they instantly switch to a shot of the board chair, and now they're showing you his name. Those are three different things that happened that a single camera can't accomplish. Static shot of the whole room, the close-up of the gentleman who is starting the meeting, and a super who tells the public who he is instantly. As we go on, we're just, I'm just going to take just a few minutes to show you a little bit more of this meeting, where again, you'll see some of the other cameras that are in play. I believe they're using a total of three cameras. One at the back, which is their static shot for any situation, one that can see the board, and then you'll see a third camera that's kind of positioned, maybe back where the flag is over there, that is actually pointed towards the audience. In a lot of situations, there will be a fourth camera that would be always pointed at the podium, because as you've seen tonight, there are a lot, there's a lot of activity that takes place at the podium. So to have a camera that can go to, maybe even fast forward, to, there's a good example. All right, we're going back to the static shot. Now, somebody's operating what's called a switcher. They're actually choosing what the people are seeing. All right, there's another board member who's, who the camera, the other camera had a chance to go and focus on that other board member while they went to that static shot. And there's his name. Somebody's created those supers, somebody, it's called a lower third super, somebody has punched the button to bring that up, and they'll punch the button to take it off in just a second. And in a second, we'll see a podium shot where the public, here we go. That's the third camera that would be located back where our flag is currently pointing towards their podium. And that's really what I wanted you to see. Thank you. So when you're at, the only other element that we're not really seeing is, let's say tonight's presentation where I'm showing you something on a screen, where Tim Fearley's going to show you a PowerPoint. You want to have a system that integrates those presentations into the video, not a camera that swings around and shoots it from afar. You want to have a feed into your switcher so that whoever's operating the switcher, they're called a director, they can actually punch a button, and everyone at home will see, just like we just saw on the screen, they'll see that very same thing up full. So there's more activity that can be done to document well for the public, not just document, but allow them to experience a board meeting in some format that allows them to see who's speaking, what the presentation really looks like in full, and make sure they don't miss the action. There is one more scene, which we may see that comes up, but they also have used that same static shot there when we had the presentation of colors today. The beginning of the meeting actually shows a presentation of colors, and they could zoom in on the students who were being recognized, and it may not be that particular meeting, so don't want that up. Oh, oh, that's good. Hit that. Okay, so there's an example. A camera did not swing around and shoot that. That's a tape that's actually being integrated into the video. And you see how clear that is? It's clear, it's immediate, you can read everything, it's full, it's just the way you're seeing it here is what the people at home are seeing, or if they're watching it on the web. And we are watching it on the web. This is a webcast that most people, if you're going to the trouble of doing the video, you want the public to get it in as many places as possible. You want it on the computer, you want it on the cable television, you want it on YouTube and social media. In my case, I actually used to go to the trouble burning DVDs and delivering them to the library the next day so that people who didn't have access to any of those materials could get it at the library. I don't know whether anybody could ever drive it to the library, but we did. So I just wanted you to see that. Does anybody have any questions about what you just saw? Let me ask you that before we keep going.
Jan, I have one question. I understand the three-camera concept. I was just wondering, and I know that that's what the county commissioners use for their meetings, do you know what Asheville City Council uses? Because I got to say, that's much nicer looking than the city council meetings that I have seen on TV. I just was wondering the difference they used.
And I agree with you, what they have is pretty poor, but I think a lot of it has to do, in fact, I'm glad you mentioned that, because if you look at Asheville City versus Funkham County meetings, I think personally, and I have not been to their chambers to see what they have, but I think largely, well, let me say this, I've been to the room, I've seen their room, they have an impossible room for lighting reasons. I think what, the problem you have when you look at Asheville City is lighting. Regardless of the best equipment, if you don't have at least decent lighting, you're going to have issues because the darker the video, the harder the camera has to work. And I think that's a big part of why it doesn't look that great there. But I haven't been, so I can't tell you for sure.
I was just going to say, I have been to some Asheville City Council meetings, and I believe that they just have one camera that they're currently running unless something's changed in the last year or two.
City Council or city schools?
City Council.
Yeah, I know she's talking about city, yeah, we are talking about city council.
Yes.
Because the city schools has four cameras, so I know that.
I was, to compare, I was just curious.
Most people who do meetings on a regular, most, across the country, everybody who does meetings is going to have at least three cameras.
But the information is still getting out there raw if needed. May not be as pretty. I like pretty, but.
Well, I like, I don't care about pretty, but I do care about clear and making sure that it's identified and that people know who it is.
Yeah, and they do that.
And really, the difference in the number of cameras is relatively academic because what happens is when you have the, cameras are not terribly expensive. You're talking anywhere for a pan tilt camera, I'll tell you what that is. Remember how you saw the static shot, how it was just one big overview? That camera is just mounted, and it does not have a tilt mechanism. It doesn't have a piece of equipment that's going to make it rotate in the room. It can possibly zoom in and zoom out, but it's not going to move. And that in and of itself can save you four or five thousand dollars in the type of mounting system for that camera. But the rest of the cameras, and having them on a tripod makes it very easy. So the camera that's just sitting over here on sticks, as they say, tripod, is not a big deal. What makes it more costly is when it's mounted on the wall. But in any case, what all those cameras do is to feed into something called a switcher. And you, regardless of whether you have six cameras, ten cameras, twenty cameras, somebody's punching a button and deciding which one of those cameras you're going to see at home. So for very little money, you can have multiple cameras, but you still have to have the switcher, which is going to have a lot of different inputs on it. You still have to have the equipment to bring in the feed of what you're doing. So there are a lot of pieces that go into creating a decent video. And the other thing I wanted to say right up front before we talk about the options is I look at this long-term. When I went through the same process in another state for a city council, we didn't just look at the board meetings or the zoning board meetings or the public hearings and the other hearings, although those are very, very important, and they're very important to you as that board. But there, we also looked at the opportunity to use that same equipment, that investment, on a daily basis. In our situation, that was the city government and education, it could be learned, used for distance learning on a regular basis. Almost every week, I have somebody come to our department and ask for us to videotape a presentation that's being made in professional development. If they brought a speaker in from out of state, can we tape them and show them to people who aren't there? There are lots of reasons to use video equipment. So whatever you do, you want to make sure it's equipment that is readily available, easy to use, and the room maximizes what you can do with it. In my city government, for example, we have what's called a green screen. Has anybody been to a news studio and seen what the weather people do? They stand in front of the weather map, but there is no weather map. They're pointing, when they go like this, and there it is in Florida, and there it is in California, and it's not there. It's all computer-generated. Well, we have a green screen, and you can get a green screen big enough to actually put a whole group of kids. We did a show called Student Voices, where our high school kids, kids from every high school came, sat in front of the green screen, and we videotaped them talking about topics of interest to them, whether it was teen pregnancy, or driving, well, it wasn't texting at the time that intoxicated or whatever it happened to be. You could do whole shows, and instead of being in front of a green screen, they can be anywhere you want. You could do a cultural show where they're sitting on the Eiffel Tower if you wanted to. But you've got to have good lighting and a place to do it. And then it's very easy to do that kind of large-scale production using your boardroom, basically, as a teaching. When, what I want, Ms. Churchill has already indicated to you, we went on a field trip. Ms. Churchill went, Tim Fearley went, I went, Chris Peroni here went, and we saw what they do at the county commissioners' chamber. They have equipment that they recently upgraded. In fact, in March of two thousand and one, when I talked with you, they had just gone out to bid for that equipment. And just as a basis for you, I presented their bid, and a company's response, which was an eighty thousand dollar job, eighty-four thousand to be exact, for what they did in their boardroom. Now, when we talked with Kathy Hughes, who is their communication person and county clerk, she explained that they were able to get that bid down, but the way they did that was to actually utilize equipment they had in the old commissioners' chambers. So they were able to incorporate some of that old equipment. And that raises another question that has come up. Can we beg, borrow, or steal URTV equipment? That, as you may know, URTV went away. Supposedly, there is equipment there. I have had no fewer than five conversations with Asheville City. URTV equipment, the usable pieces of it, according to them, it has been dispersed throughout the city for various purposes, and there is very little left. What is left, they intend to put up for auction at some time when they decide they are done working with it. So unless somebody up there has better connections than I am and knows something I don't, there ain't no equipment for us at Asheville City. So what are our options? Our options are to do the one-camera type of scenario that are very valuable, so this and video people are doing right now. We can pay somebody to do that. You will not have the title graphics, you will not have the different camera angles, you will have a document of a board meeting. You can do that. We can bring in an outside company to do those meetings. Tim Amos with, who is not with Asheville City Schools any longer, but he still operates their mobile video van, has given us a quote in the past, and it's still pretty accurate, of approximately a thousand dollars. And that may sound like a lot, but having done video production work, that's very generous of him. And it is about the same as the Caveras County. The video that you watched, Ms. Baldwin gave me the quote of, they said it was about nine hundred dollars a meeting. I couldn't find any meetings in the ones that I looked at that were longer than two hours to two hours, thirty minutes. Ours are a little longer than that.
So we're working on that.
We're working on that, yeah. But that can contribute, because of course, you're paying staff, or you know, somebody, some outside company, to be there for a longer period of time. They need to come in before the meeting to set up, they need to stay after the meeting to tear down, and they need to provide us with a videotape. So there's probably six hours or so of actual work being done for people to man those cameras and the switcher. Tim Amos would bring a crew of four. I asked him about volunteers. He said they do not use volunteers when they go on mobile shoots because there's a lot of difficult, complicated equipment and setup and a way that you put the cables back together, and they just can't count on volunteers. They don't use volunteers. But he wouldn't be happy to talk with us further about that. Maybe we can get him down if he makes a commitment. I don't know for sure. What we would do is go out and bid and try to find him and whoever else is in the area who could come and do it. But I would say a thousand dollars is probably a good figure to keep in your head until such time as we would take it to a bid. We can outfit this room. To do that, the estimate that I came up with, just look pricing it online with, to the best of my ability and background in television, for the same type of things that we've been talking about, I think we could get from eighty thousand down to sixty thousand in that genre without talking about much in the way of lighting improvements. Where lighting really becomes important is not so much for this type of the scenario as it is for other uses where you might be having things happening in other parts of the room. But anyway, it'd be somewhere in that ballpark. I'd like to go to Tim Fearley to talk about another idea.
Is this where we can move?
This is when you move, yes. Thank God.
That's good.
All right, everybody heads up. Head down.
That's going to break up the.
This thing does break.
See it better.
Okay, folks. This is an alternative concept that involves the STEM school. There is a room in this building that is a large kind of high bay space that's underutilized. It's currently used, and has been traditionally used, as kind of the book repository and the place where we've distributed books from the school and others, to all the schools and other supplies. That system has changed. We actually have less books, we're going more digital. So they don't need quite as much space as they've had in the past, and the room is right adjacent to the proposed STEM area and could be easily converted into a menatorium. So what I'm going to show you is a little animation of what that space and what it looked like, because right now, it's very raw space, it's industrial-looking space. But that makes it easy to renovate, there's certainly not a lot of demolition to do. What you're seeing here is a bird's eye view with the roof of the building gone, if you will, a floor plan. And you're seeing the entrance to the room is actually under, right here. And these are auditorium risers that are telescoping. So you'll see later that they can pull back into and park against the wall so that the room can become a multipurpose room with a flat floor. You're looking at the board daisies here, which would be mobile and be able to be moved back into this room here, which could be the storage room as well as the control room for the video and TV production. There are a couple of daisies that could be located. You could use a dais here for the public to come down and speak at. There is another dais here that's in a comparable position to this one that could be used simultaneously, or if it made sense, that could be the dais that everyone speaks from, just like we do right now. We have kind of a back hallway. This is our network operations center and communication area that would need to stay there. But there is a kind of a back hall here that could provide access for the board to enter this room from back here while the public and everyone else enters here. We would need to add an egress door right about here because it becomes an assembly space with a lot of people, and the egress compartments would be in place. So with that little introduction, I'm going to play this very short animation of the space, and you're going to see it transform from the, a board-type or a lecture-type condition which you see here, to a kind of a workshop space that could be multifunctional for us. There are a couple of daisies that could be located. You could use a dais here for the public to come down and speak at. There's another dais here that's in a comparable position to this one that could be used simultaneously. Or if it made sense, that could be the dais that everyone speaks from, just like we do right now. We have kind of a back hallway. This is our network operations center and communication area that would need to stay there. But there is a kind of a back hall here that could provide access for the board to enter this room from back here while the public and everyone else enters here. We would need to add an egress door right about here because it becomes an assembly space with a lot of people and the egress requirements would be in place. So with that little introduction, I'm going to play this very short animation of the space and you're going to see it transform from the board-type or a lecture-type condition, which you see here, to a kind of a workshop space that could be multifunctional for us. So some of the uses for a multipurpose space adjacent to the STEM, we could put this at the forefront of the STEM project so that we could use this to bring the public in, the students in and parents, and give them a firsthand look at the facility so they could contribute and consider whether they want their kid to be a part of this. That's a look at the room from kind of the top seat. So here's the, you're seeing the boardroom, you're seeing a shell that would reflect the sound. And then we spin around and from kind of the back corner where the flag is, that's kind of what the room would look like. So you see elevated, excellent seating. And here you see the bleachers with seating like you're sitting in now, but they could be upholstered, would retract against the wall. So it could be used for workshops, for lectures, guest lectures. And you're seeing cameras in the corners here that could be permanently mounted in here. There could be acoustical improvements to the room. That shell will project the sound out so that you don't always have to use a microphone for every use. It could serve for STEM performances, for plays, for presentations. It could serve for distance learning functions. It could serve as STEM school assemblies or assemblies other schools could meet here. The retractable bleachers could allow a secondary PE space for STEM. Right now, we're thinking of a half-on-a-half court basketball size. But with the bleachers retracted, this could be a low-impact PE space. Of course, we could have board meetings here once a month. But to make an investment in the room, the multipurpose uses, this thing would be highly sought after for, I think, a lot of folks, including the community, if you wish to allow community use of the space. It really is a TV studio, a production studio for guest lecturers, for staff training. We have a desperate need for staff training and workshops that might be configured like this. This room right now holds about 145 people in the audience. The boardroom in that configuration would end up being about 180 people. So it's a little larger space, desperately needed. And again, with the daisies and the lecterns mobile, there's many, many uses that I'm probably not pointing out to you. There you go. Any questions about that? That's, I know it's kind of cartoony, but hopefully it helps you visualize the character of that space.
What we would do is, in this space right here where the pointer is, that's where we would put the equipment that Ms. Churchill and Tim Fairley and I saw. It's basically a large computer desk. You've got a very large, about two large computer monitors. And then a rack that has various elements to it, whether it's the power, whatever the presentation is and the audio inputs. So that fits in a little corner of this larger room. And as Mr. Fairley said, the dais could actually, all of these pieces that you are sitting at that are permanently affixed here, could actually be on casters and rolled back into this space to get those out of the way and therefore use the space a little bit more effectively too. But yes, they would all be in there. You would have, you've got your mounted camera here on this side that can see the podium area. You've got the camera in the back for your static shot. And then we would put, well, there'd be two cameras on each side so that we can hit either side of the board area, each space over, you know, each side of the room. And then we would probably have another camera that we could, if we wanted to, just carry around and use that here, that would not necessarily be mounted. You could mount it, but it's always good to have a camera that can be moved around in order to get those unusual presentations that might be different. I think of the kindergartners who, or the Stanish immersion kids, remember when they were sitting on the floor? A mounted camera may not be able to get that shot the way, so they can be a little bit more portable to be. So there are a lot of different options there. And I would say that when you think about the expense for this, again, could we do it with a single consumer camera and just document the meeting so that everybody can be convinced there's nothing shady going on in Buckle Paine Schools? Absolutely, we could do that. Could we invest in this equipment for basically what you would pay? If you think about, if we were to rent it for $1,000 a month, that's $12,000 a year for one meeting, times five years. You've paid for the equipment in one meeting at a time when you could be using the space, you could be using the video equipment on a daily basis for all sorts of different student-related, staff-related projects. So to me, for basically the price of a reasonably expensive car, you've got a lot of use for a long period of time. That's how I would think.
The 180 is the workshop for folks in the audience. And then as the, in a board meeting like this, about 210. And there could be standing room in the back that you could get more in there. So currently, this existing boardroom's about 145. So you probably wouldn't have to move when you have that, you know, those couple of big events. It probably can all be handled here.
What's the cost of this renovation?
To do this, we will need to, if you're going to do STEM and you're going to have to make a decision at some point on that, and we did put it to the forefront of STEM, what we'd want to do is to kind of isolate this space from STEM. So there would be a portion of the STEM renovations done to put up doors, walls and such so that construction could be happening on the other side of the wall. And we'd have proper egress, safety, security, and isolation from the construction for this space, which we'd want for, you know, bringing students in for STEM and such anyways. So the total package, as far as I can tell, to do a portion of STEM, remember that we're having to get outside us. We really need to redo the restrooms down here. They don't need code currently. We touch this space, they don't need ADA, there's restaurants adjacent to this. We have to renovate those. We put in two additional staff toilets. There's HVAC issues, that building, that's the original HVAC back there. And so the total package that if you wanted to proceed with this, I would be requesting that you fund about $850,000, that's including the video portion of it, to begin STEM and do this part of it.
And everybody needs to understand that this was already in the game plan. The words say this humorously, but if you're nice to the kids in the STEM high school, they might let you use that. But I'm saying that with a bit of seriousness though because if we're going to put this type of investment in, for Pete's sakes, let's have, let's do something that's going to be utilized by our kids. And I can tell you again, you know, I've talked about the delay in the open. We're talking August 2014. We're now a year, year beyond. But remember what I said. The benefit of that is that town hall meeting, it gives us all sorts of opportunities to outreach to the community. What an incredible, incredible, from a facility standpoint, opportunity to bring parents, bring speakers, bring teachers, talking about STEM. That's part, yeah, how do I, yeah, the kids. And I was the one that said, we thought we was doing it for the kids. Bring them up here and that's the type of, because all Tim's doing is taking the timetable where this was a later, later, later component to the time schedule and we're pulling it forward. Now, why can we do that? And explain that, because of the location. That's how we're able to do it, because it's isolated to some degree.
Tim, sorry, Dr. Paul. So originally you'd estimated that the STEM high school would be about $5 million, correct?
That's correct.
So you're saying you could work this into $5 million or would it be a little bit more than $5 million?
I think it would be a little bit more. The versatility of this room that wasn't conceived of with the telescopic bleachers so that it could be used for multipurposes will definitely add some cost. The lighting would be, you know, an added cost to it. Full carpeting throughout. Yeah, we're in the vicinity of 5.5 million.
But that's not just the cause. Remember, we're in the design and studying.
You funded some seed money for design work. So I've been able to involve plumbing mechanical, electrical engineers to look at what we've got, to meet with our maintenance folks. And so part of that is what we're going to have to do to the HVAC system back there because it's inefficient right now. This was a big square D factory and the equipment back there is, it serves that big space. So there isn't a very good breakdown of zoning, if you will, of the HVAC system. Plus it's forty-seven years old and it's loud and such. So you've got really good bones back there, boiler, chiller, piping and all. But the air delivery system really needs to be done back there. That's the big finding, since you funded that, that we kind of knew, but it, these experts really confirmed that. And that's why we're at about 5.45 million.
But don't underestimate, underestimate the importance of what you just saw there in the design. Because to truly have a STEM high school, not a STEM program, not a cookie cutter program that you could in whatever facility, but a true STEM 21st century high school, it's all about the flexibility of space. That was a great example. Now again, bleachers pull in, you have now open space. You have multiple views that just plays in along with the technology. That is at the core what we are seeing across this country in a STEM high school facility. And they're all across the country.
Just one quick question and, sorry, just to clarify on it. When you said having the community the opportunity to have them use it, I'm thinking that, you know, companies could use this for weekend training or something they want. And I know it's hard to find space around Asheville to host speakers. Is there a way to creatively charge companies so that we can, okay, so that's great. Okay, that's what I, because that's one way that maybe it can help offset the habit of letting, as we understand.
You just made a great point again. We're talking STEM. What makes STEM, a STEM facility, different than what you've had at PC Robertson, INCA, and North Park? It's that connection with the business. And don't forget just business, it also includes the university and college setting. So, you know, business setting could use that facility. And I assure you that Hank Dunn and Pondber have uses for this in their settings as well.
And in fact, something else I was going to mention before we leave the topic, which is when Ms. Churchill and Mr. Fairley and Chris Promine and I went to the chambers, I had a conversation via email with Pete Callender and I asked Kathy Hughes, so you've got these really nice facilities, what if our school board decided they wanted to kind of use your facilities at school board meetings? So Ms. Churchill had asked me, and I was going to do it anyway, to go back and ask them what it would cost and could we do that? But could we do that is a little bit sensitive. It would involve you all asking them and having them take some kind of action because currently they do not allow anyone to use that facility. It is only for their commission meetings. So what I'm going to tell you next is totally dependent on you being able to talk to them and getting them to do that. But I was less interested when I heard how much they were going to charge us, which is to have the facility would be about $1,000. And remember the cost of having a company come here and videotape you. And we would all have to go there, the students would have to go there. The parking is a dollar an hour, at the tops of $8 for the parking garage. And that doesn't include the security of the building, which they would charge us another $500 for. We would not be able to use the kitchen facilities, only the meeting space. And there were some other restrictions. So the cost today, when all was said and done, I sort of laughed, was like $2,200. So the answer to your question is, can we charge this place? Oh, yes, I mean, it's funny that they don't share it with anybody, but they already know what they charge.
Well, Kathy really didn't want to do that for me, but I kind of went back and forth with her and I copied one to want to read and I said, just so they know if they even want to ask.
Well, it just shows that everybody, you know, is willing to have the opportunity to, you know, do something like this and raise money.
And the other reason for that charge, just so you realize they're not trying to scalp you, is that they have these nice video facilities and nice microphones and they want their people to run it. And I don't blame them because we're going to need to do the same thing. We're not going to rent this room now and let anybody use the equipment because you don't know how to. So we would have to recognize the fact that we have to have a staff person who's got that knowledge. And hopefully they teach in the STEM school or be on my staff or whatever. But we're going to have to have somebody able to work, at least one person. And then you can have some volunteers, but at least one person's going to have to operate this room.
And when you say volunteers, you mean more like students?
Well, students, when you've got them. You know, on a night event, you may not have students. Because keep in mind, we're starting with ninth graders. And again, look at time and I did it as long as school night, so.
You've got the internship, apprenticeship.
Oh, yeah, I mean, ultimately, yes. I mean, that's the right word.
But during the day, absolutely, yes.
I was just going to mention, at the last meeting, I had mentioned VenuVision that Alnax County uses that internet service to, their board meetings online. And today I talked to Union County's board member and they use something called AV as in Audio Visual Capture All. And I apologize because I went there looking at it and everybody was coming down here and I thought, oh, we're taking a break. So I was not paying attention like I should have been. But it was amazing because it actually links the video to your board agenda. So if anybody can go to the board agenda, click on the item they're interested in, it links you straight to just that video portion of the meeting. And it only costs $400 per meeting. And I don't know, there could be some startup cost, but I don't know about. And I don't know the logistics of this at all because I just talked to them today. But I do really like.
I know the logistics because I did that in my past life in city government. That's exactly what we did and our service was less than $400 a month. But if I recall correctly, it's about $150. But yes, you can get services that will do that. It is a little bit time-consuming and involves more care on our end in producing it so that we have to remember to hit a button that marks the tape in a certain place that it has the knowledge of where to go. But absolutely, I could not agree with you more. It's a great feature, it's a great feature.